Yesterday, even though it was in kind of same.
I was like, who's that?
Yeah.
No, I don't know.
No.
I knew you were behind me.
How's it going?
I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm not gonna stop and say hi. It's gonna be good.
Yeah. Crazy.
They had the front, really calm. But then I'm like, oh, that's right. And then I'm lost. I'm maybe on twice as far, so.
What are you doing?
I've got all the big stuff.
Are you? Okay. Which one?
Yeah, Mr. Oriol.
Okay.
You're being so good. So I'm like, I'm gonna do this. So, you know, I'm in danger of.
If you do it at all, you're great.
You through a house or two?
No, just a. Former councilman.
Oh, okay.
Chuck Osborn?
Oh, Chuck Osborn.
Who are you with?
I'm the start counter. I'll go to the city please.
Oh, okay.
Right, right. We were sitting at the press table.
Kevin, fell on these from like seven years.
No, it's not. It's the first thing that there are multiple.
Doing good, thanks.
Hi, Joe. Good, how are you, sir?
Hello.
Well, they got it.
Hi, how are you?
How's it going? Go ahead.
Hey, how are you? Hi, wonderful. How are you, Benjamin?
How are you?
Technology is fighting over.
Oh, okay.
What, please?
It was the one down.
You don't mind?
Yeah.
You started to tell me.
No. I feel like I had to do it the other way.
Buckle?
Yes. Were you buckling?
I think it was crazy.
You buckled it?
No.
I just call out your name.
You don't.
Uh huh.
All bigger.
Subnude death perception.
I know, but why? Crazy when they go apart for the system to wear away. Yeah. You're like, no. It is. Because you kind of wonder like, what is he like? Thirty years.
Well, today is.
Oh, God, that's right. Don't you still owe me, like, for getting that one word in?
I forget, like.
Don't you still owe me?
What was that?
Gosh, it was so good.
That was amazing.
Like, you would just come, we're like, oh.
That was perfect. Oh, my gosh, hard to remember. That was, I definitely.
Massachusetts, yeah.
Oh, I see, yours are a different subject.
We're on.
Why?
Yeah, yeah.
The one that was over in the square.
So we're gonna still.
How the Billy coaching?
It's totally a tear down.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, and the.
Because we tired.
Right. It's great, right? Yeah. Like, so what does it happen? Why didn't you know that?
They took, they had their kind of food there and then they walked it out. And said, well.
Just skewed.
So you're trying to say you have a root enemy. You're just so waiting.
One took out my rent.
Did you see that?
No, it's in the back.
You're like, can I have it back?
Yeah, I did see that one today. I saw it cut up and off to the side.
Yeah.
Just write on your.
Yeah, exactly. No, serious.
You ready, Ben?
I'm not. Mayor knocking over one of these speakers. Has delight in spite of. Oh, I will be ready in a moment.
Technical difficulties? I tried.
Is that sabotage? Is that sabotage?
It was an accident.
It was testing.
It was an accident.
Doesn't, doesn't do well when it falls over.
Testing the durability.
Yes.
All right, now I'm ready.
All right. And now call to order the public hearing of April tenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is six forty-five P M. Still six forty-five. Ben, would you call the rule?
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Lyer?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Waren?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Volt is absent, six present.
Motion to excuse Councilman Revolt.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we begin the public comment for our public hearings on this agenda. For the first topic, Ben, would you read the title for the record?
Ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter eleven fifty-nine nonconforming uses, buildings, lots, and structures, specifically subsection eleven fifty-nine point oh three E discontinuance of use of the codified ordinance of the City of North Canton to lower the period during which a nonconforming use is continued while inactive from two years to twelve months.
Jamie. All right. Basically, what this is doing is this is taking the, if you have a nonconforming use that has been grandfathered in, typically in the past, it has been allowed to exist for two years with unused of the property. So if you move in within two years, you can continue that use. So we're looking to change that from the two years down to twelve months. So that pretty much encapsulate everything down there? Anything else to add? Okay. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, please approach the podium. Last call. Okay, and anyone wishing to speak in opposition of ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, please approach the podium. Okay. Final opportunity. Okay, this will appear into the city council agenda. Moving on to the next topic, Ben, would you please read the title for the record?
Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of North Canton to reclassify thirty-three parcels in the City of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the Planning and Zoning Code in order to phase out office building zoning throughout the city.
All right. I don't know, it needs much more explanation than what you just said. We're looking to phase out the office building zoning and basically move things to uses that might be more appropriate for the areas where they are in the city. So that's pretty much it, unless, is there anything else to add, Patrick? Okay.
Okay.
Can I speak to that?
Yep, one, one minute. Let me get through this part. Yes. At this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
Okay, my name's Dennis. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Can you get up to the podium, sir?
Get to the podium. Thank you, sir.
And then state your name. Speak loud enough so I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, my, like I said, my name is Dennis Denarda. I live in Washington Square South, two thousand five Windstone Circle Northeast, North Canton, Ohio. And I've been there a few, few years. But I got some information about the zoning changes. And one of the things that concerns me is what I want to ask questions about is a letter. It says, change zoning from office building to various, not variant, but various, B A R I O U S, with no definition given to what various means, okay? Various means to me a lot open-ended. And I just wondered, is there a clarification to that zoning? When you're saying you're changing these existing zoning things to cover these other properties, and I don't know what they were before, I did have a list of all, there's quite a few of them. So you're trying to change and clarify what the zoning should be, and that's great. But what is it? And what's it gonna be? If it says, just simply says, we're changing that to various, I don't agree with that because that's open-ended. It doesn't provide clarification, doesn't provide definition. That's my comment.
Can you spell your last name for me?
D I, capital, yeah, A R D A. Did I speak loud enough for you?
You did, thank you.
And it's a pleasure living in North Canton. But I'll be honest with you, I love it here. And I just think about the, the area, and I'm concerned about it because I think it's government, but I want the government to represent the people.
Thank you.
And that comment goes for, I think you changed, there was a nursing home up there and another office, but those were just changed, the office space, I didn't have any comments about those, but it's just various thing that I have to comment to. And I'd like a clarification to that.
Want me to answer?
Yeah.
So the, the various in the letter refers to that that all of the properties being considered as some change are going from office building, but they're not all going to the same classification. So is various in a sense that different groups of properties are becoming different types?
But I can't speak to that. What I'm saying is you put a phrase in that says, okay, here's twenty-five properties, we're changing that to various, that's nice. But to the person that's reading, it says, changing this one to what? Is this gonna be a multiple residential, two-family, one-family, is this gonna be a business? He just says various, and I don't think there's a definition of what various is and how that, how that applies to each one of these properties.
Yes, they're not, so the new zoning classification isn't various. The letter should have also had instructions on how to go online and look at the whole text of.
I did look at the whole text, but what I'm saying, what's confusing.
Point of order. I don't think we're.
It's changed, changed.
Okay.
It says, change zoning from O V, office business.
Yeah.
To various. Okay, now, it was just saying, well, we're changing it to various zoning things, it's different, but you said to various.
So you would have liked it to less, we're changing it to X or Y?
I want a definition.
Which one?
Yeah, that's all.
Without having to go to the website and look it up?
Well. I think I did go to the website, and I listed all the properties that you changed it to, but I'm not, it has a definition of what they're changing, but maybe.
Yeah, it should have had this attachment, and I'm happy to go through it. So when I'm talking about the fact that, like, different properties are getting different zoning class, so that's why it said various.
Yeah, and, and to my, you know, to hear me speak, I just say, I just get concerned when someone says, we're changing it to various, it seems like we're allowing anything to go there, okay? And I'm sure that's not, but just a letter.
That's how red. I could see that.
Yeah, to me, it almost read as if, as various was a type of classification.
Yeah.
That's what it reads.
Right, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I thought you were talking, I thought you were using the word variance.
That's what I thought.
On something. So he should be able to look up. And let's say, let's say there's a doctor's office in one of those zones, and what would be the process on, on reclassifying an O V building to various?
Well, it won't be reclassified to various. So each piece of property is getting a specific new zoning.
And this could be followed similarly, right?
Yeah, so the ordinance spells them out, each exhibit is its own reclassification.
And they are right now in concert with the business or whatever's in that particular property now.
The proposals are all intended to keep what is there now.
Yeah, so it's not something new that you're trying to classify for that property. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wanting to speak in opposition?
Chuck Osborn, three oh seven February Street, Southeast North Canton, Ohio. I have no viewpoint either for or against. As Mr. McLeister started to point out, you're violating your council rules. And now you throw out a caveat that, oh, this is a public hearing and not a council meeting. I thought these were etched in stone, and I am repeatedly dismissed, thrown out of meetings, violating the rules.
Chuck, and again, you're violating, this is a public hearing based on these two matters.
Mr. Shroya, you make it up as you.
Where's that? Officer Gavin, could you please escort Mr. Or.
You were kidding me!
I'm not kidding you. Why, why is it always a surprise that when you don't follow the rules over.
I'm following the rules. This was an open night meeting.
You're still not, you're still not.
That wasn't the time period.
Brad, you know the rule?
Yeah, I got it.
This is unbelievable. I did not violate any rules. You guys write on your own rules.
Like, literally, right now. Okay. Final opportunity, you wish to, anyone that wishes to address council on this matter?
In favor of? Do we offer it to in favor of? Yes, okay.
Yep. Okay, this will also appear on the council agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion. We will reconvene shortly.
Two minutes. Three minutes.
No, thanks for coming. This is usually the hardest thing for people to do.
Yes. You know how you gotta do the volunteer. I take my mom's.
We'll get started with the meeting. So, you don't want to?
Yeah.
It's the city council meeting.
Because most of us don't want to be there right now. So we're gonna listen, most of us took communication permission, active listening skills, takes a notice if you can, because we have an opportunity when this is over, to meet with some of them, to discuss an issue, so if there's something that's important to you, you can ask questions and find out how somebody your age can help out. Yep, this will take care of it. Possible three subrises on the merit bench. So. You can jump in, take a turn. If we have more people, we'll get together.
I'm sure it's gonna be a bit interesting, but if I was. I didn't even know. I think we'll. I did it. Unfortunately, there is a community, but once I do. I know this doesn't happen often, so I'm pretty sure doing it, and then do the other parts. Yeah. I started it up for a.
This is.
I was here. So.
So that's.
So Ben, you should set up, he had an open time where he could let us set. Did you find out?
Before we start.
Okay.
He still turned out okay.
Is it all true? Everyone will be quiet.
Trump thirty-five. Okay.
Oh, before.
Marty, can you hear us?
I can't, can you hear me?
We can.
It almost sounded like he said, I can't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Why is Marty not? Hey, why is he here?
All right. And now call the order, the city council meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the rule? Okay, sorry, we open prayer. Do we have anybody, or is it? Jamie tonight? Reverend Placer, please.
All right. Let us pray. Only one, known by many names and beyond all names, spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of community. We ask your blessings on the people here in this room and those in our community not here tonight. Bless us as we do the work of our neighbors and guide us always. Amen. So this is.
And to the Republic, which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Ben, would you please call the rule? Member Orr?
Here.
Member Lyer?
Here.
Member Waren?
Here.
Member Lyer?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Revolt is absent, six present. Motion to excuse member Revolt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from March, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and the first quarter of twenty twenty-three financial report? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, recognition of time of republic, this is open topic tonight. At this time, any members of the public wanting to address council may do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Comments are not limited to any items on the agenda, open mic. The rules for speaking will appear on both TV screens. This will serve as the only warning for anyone in attendance, in attendance tonight. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the premises. Anyone wishing to address council tonight, please approach the podium.
Thank you. My name is Dan Sutter. I live at seven seven one seven Angel Drive Northwest, North Canton. Mayor, council president, council members and staff, good evening. My name is Dan Sutter. I am a city board president for the Stark County Board of Development of Disabilities, known as Stark T D. In my volunteer position, and I've been on the board for ten years, and I've sat on the finance committee for all ten years. It's an honor to be able to speak to you tonight, this evening, in my home community of North Canton. Stark T D supports over four thousand one hundred people in the county and nearly three hundred people who live right here in North Canton. And the number is even higher when you include our D P students attending our North Canton City Schools. There are twenty-one independent providers employed in North Canton, and North Canton is home to eight private provider businesses. Our mission is to support choices and create opportunities for people with disabilities and their families. Our vision is that each person will be accepted and fully included within our community. However, to achieve this, there are still attitudinal barriers that people with disabilities sometimes still face because of the need to look, walk, talk, and learn. We look to address these challenges and perceptions. Here are some more numbers. At Stark T D, each year, we work with over seven hundred families that have an infant with a disability or delay. Each year, we provide preschool and school-age educational services to a hundred and seventy students with complex needs. Each year, we fund the services and supports that over eighteen hundred people, mostly adults, can live, work, and play in the Stark County community. Once we provide funding for a person with a disability, this money stays with them for the rest of their lives. So we make, make a commitment to support them sometimes for fifty, sixty, or even seventy years. We want you to know us and what we do. We also want you to know, we are a trusted partner that thousands of Stark County families rely on. And Stark County provides vital services and high-quality support to a steadily increasing number of people with developmental disabilities throughout their lifetime. We are serving seven hundred fifty-six, or thirty percent more people than we were a decade ago, and all with the same annual funding. This is something we're very proud of. On May second, we have a levy on the ballot that's needed for us to continue our work. It is issue twenty-one, a five-year renewal that is not a new tax. Per the Stark County auditor, a homeowner of a hundred thousand dollar home will pay sixty-eight dollars per year if this renewal is approved. Ultimately, we want each person with a disability to have a safe, good life, and we're working with North Canton and other committees in Stark County to bring this to fruition. So to the people of North Canton, please support us by voting for issue twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, but if I might, Mr. President.
Sure.
While I have the opportunity, Mr. Sutter, if he was the person who's in charge of sign locations, there's a issue twenty-one sign location four by four that is at the intersection of Charlotte and Main that is in a construction zone. We're gonna start widening the road on Main Street and Charlotte that'll end up being run over with a bulldozer in the next day or two if we're not able to get it.
We'll get to it. There's a lot of signs out.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Done a good job.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address public time? Last call? All right, moving on. Old business, Ben, would you please read for the title of Resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three?
A resolution in support of the twenty twenty-three North Canton Community Survey to be conducted by the Office of City Council for the purpose of gaining input from the residents, businesses, and visitors of the City of North Canton on the conduct of North Canton City Government and the issues facing the same.
Okay, ordinance and rules, John.
Well, this is the third reading. We've had some changes, slight word changes and stuff. Is there any other questions or anything for this? Being a third reading. So I propose we pass this.
Okay.
Second.
Let's, let's have a motion. Yeah.
I make a motion.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, Ben, would you read the title of ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to enter into an amended and restated sidewalk performance bond between the city and McKinley Apple Grove Limited for the sanctuary phase three development as shown on the plaque recorded in instrument number two zero one six zero seven two one zero zero two eight one two seven of the Stark County record.
This is my committee. This is for the sanctuary performance bond, and this is phase three. There's nothing new on this, it's very standard. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance amending chapter eleven fifty-nine nonconforming uses, buildings, lots, and structures, specifically subsection eleven fifty-nine point oh three E discontinuance of use of the codified ordinance of the City of North Canton to lower the period during which a nonconforming use is continued while inactive from two years to twelve months.
Okay, community and economic development, Jamie.
All right, well, this is one of the items we discussed in our, our public portion of the meeting, or the, excuse me, the meeting before. So I don't know that there's anything else to add. I guess I would, at this point, move that we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of North Canton to reclassify thirty-three parcels in the City of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the Planning and Zoning Code in order to phase out office building zoning throughout the city.
Jamie again?
All right, this was also another item that we discussed in our public hearing, and. All right, this was also another item that we discussed in our public hearing, and I do have a note on this, and perhaps, uh, the administration might weigh in, but I have a note saying that we'd like to take a look at the properties that are on Schneider and take them out of this consideration and address them a little bit later down the road, but will remain the other, or, excuse me, the other properties will remain in this. So is that pretty much what we're looking to do, Patrick?
Yes, I think that the couple of the parcels that are affected down there, they're in the, kind of in a state of flux at the moment, and it might be best to just move forward with everything else. Hold back on that and revisit that a little bit later after the status of those properties becomes a little more clear.
Okay, perfect. So any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, with that being said, then, um, let's see, I would move that we amend, correct me if I'm wrong, so we amend this item to remove all the Schneider, um, properties. And, yeah, that's right, okay. So, yeah, I move that we adopt this while amending the Schneider items.
When you, to vote on the amendment first.
Don't we vote on it with the amendment?
But you have to amend it first.
Okay, so then I move that we amend.
Just your motion to amend first.
Perfect, okay. I move that we amend, um, this item as discussed, removing the properties on Schneider from this item.
That's right, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three as amended?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance establishing chapter seven oh nine of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, thereby creating a facade incentive program which provides economic relief to main street businesses who update their building's facade in accordance with recommended cohesive design standards.
Jamie again?
All right, um, this one was an exciting one that I think we, at least for me, that we discussed at our last committee meeting, and this would be a way of giving some sort of financial incentive to those business owners that would so wish to improve their facade and along Main Street, and, um, this would be in the way of removing fees, uh, building fees for, uh, or inspection fees for their projects. So, um, Patrick, anything else to add? I mean, I think we covered it, uh, last week, but...
Let me just, uh, comment that the important part of this is the, is the cohesive design standard.
Okay, good point.
That will really try to develop that.
Trying to keep a cohesive design, yep.
That would also include any new businesses, not just the old businesses. Um, any new business that would think about moving on Main Street.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
If they're going into an existing.
Existing business.
Existing business.
Appreciate administration adjusting the tiers from three tiers down to two. That makes it a lot easier for them to have.
Thank you for reminding me that. We worked on that after the last meeting. It made a lot of sense to me administratively to try to deal with that, so I appreciate your, your, uh, intellectual prowess.
It's a numbers game. I enjoy the numbers side of it. So, anything under two thousands, uh, up to a hundred percent, and anything two thousand above is at to seventy-five percent of permit fees reimbursed, so that was a good move.
All right, uh, similar to comments, uh... There are more in agenda. Yeah, here, um, yeah, move that we adopt.
Well, Nina, if we want to adopt the amendment that Member Matheny just discussed, we need to do that.
I move, well, I'm getting tangled up with the procedures tonight, so I would move that we, uh, add his amendment into this item.
That is actually in tonight's legislation.
I thought it was too, but...
It's already in there.
The exact wording is shown as a red line in your packets, yes.
Okay.
So if you just wanted to make a motion to amend in accordance with the red line.
Then I'd make a motion to amend in accordance with the red line in our packets.
Second.
For ordinance thirty-three twenty twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Ben, would you please read the title of Resolution thirty-four dash twenty twenty-three?
A resolution declaring one two thousand seven Braun ambulance no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the same to be sold via a public auction through munisibid.com and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Find me on Stephanie.
Okay, so we do this, um, pretty much every year. All of our police cruisers and ambulances and fire trucks all have a certain lifespan that they live through. So you can see that this one was from two thousand seven, and it's no longer needed, uh, in our, in our municipality, so we will sell it at a public auction. Any questions or concerns?
Very straightforward.
It is very straightforward. All right, if not, I move to adopt. An emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules the council require in three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution thirty-four dash twenty twenty-three under suspension of the rules?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the city of North Canton to be appropriated for current expenses during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Finance again, Stephanie.
Okay, so throughout the year, we have to make different appropriations to our, our previous amendments. And in this one, there were two million seven hundred forty-two thousand and some that needed to be amended. Gina, do you want to talk about any of those? I mean, we had them from the general fund, the donations fund, the compensated, but was there a specific area you wanted to focus on or just?
Um, this, this is for the first quarter, and we had one early January, but we've kind of waited until the end of the quarter. So one of the big ones, um, we're reallocating our ARCA funds from storm or sanitary sewer or water projects to street projects. And as you see, that was improvement, and you'll see that with the Charlotte Street Improvement Project. We just need to change the department on that to account for it correctly. And then we also are selling the fifteen-year non-tax revenue bond. And so a portion of that you'll see on here tonight. It's about three point three million. I'll bring to you next week actually the last portion of that, which is the last million. That's the majority of them.
Okay. Any questions? All have to read it under ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-three. Okay, no other move to adopt? The first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules the council requiring three readings?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance, ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter three fifty-one parking generally of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
The ordinance rules, John?
Okay, well, Patrick really went into depth on this at our last meeting. Some of the areas, um, you know, where we can park, where we can't park, what times we can park. Also, with parking on grassy areas of your property, um, it needs to all be, you know, we need to work in with this and the other ordinance that we have with nine forty-one, I think it is. They work together on this. It also gives the police officer, right now, I think our tickets are five dollars. They'll continue parking there for five dollars. They're going to ticket those, the same as, uh, parking on our street between two A M. and five A M. in the morning. This is getting everything in. It's going to give a lot more power to the police officers. We had rules. We really just didn't enforce them, and this gives a little bit more bite into the program, and there's a lot of rules and regulations here, um, which we're all aware of, but shame on us for not being able to enforce them until now, um, properly. I think getting a lot of these RVs and trailers and stuff, or selling your car on your property, you know, it, it needs to be consistent throughout the whole city. So I would make a motion.
Has, has anyone heard any feedback regarding any of this?
No.
I, I would like to remind people, though, that, um, we did pass the ordinance on the permeable pavers.
Yeah.
And that is a, a relatively, an expensive way to have some surface area to park on if needed.
Real reason.
Well, right.
You know, I would add as well that, that, uh, many of these, these properties have a authorized surface they could park on, but choose not to.
That's a good point.
Yes. They can put it in their racks instead.
What do you mean, though? They have additional?
They have a driveway they can put their trailer in, or they have a, whether it's made out of gravel or whether it's made out of cement or asphalt.
Well, but don't, a lot of them have, really have a lot of single driveways, so I'm assuming those people are the ones that you're referring to, so really they don't if they're trying to back up their cars every day.
I'm referring to, uh, uh, just as many homes with three, two-car garages with double driveways as there are with single-car garages and single driveways. They're equal offenders.
That's interesting.
And, you know, when, if we wanted to maybe, uh, do a socioeconomic study.
Oh, yeah.
We could find that those that live in the houses with no garage or a single detached garage are on a lower socioeconomic ladder than the others, and therefore can't afford to have an extra utility trailer in their yard.
Yeah, that was my concern.
There, that's why it's just, it's rampant everywhere.
You're true on that, Ben. As I'm driving around, I'm seeing more and more, it really opened my eyes.
Just a clarification, again, the city does have overnight parking ordinance that goes from two to six A M., two A M. to six A M. And, uh, but, uh, just, the question came up too, uh, what happens if you have, you know, a special circumstance that you're going to require overnight parking on our street? The police department works very well with accommodating people for a legitimate reason, you know, it could be, uh, especially on the holidays, when you have visitors and parties and family coming in, sometimes those driveways can't accommodate everybody, so there is an allowance there that, you know, using common sense, that, you know, the police department has years worked with people to accommodate them. And, or if you're having your driveway repaid, and you need a place to park your car, so it's also not in front of a fire hydrant, okay? Or blocking somebody else's driveway, you know, so this parking ordinance does, you know, take into consideration and, uh, with, from the police department's point of view to, you know, justify giving you overnight parking for two or three nights, whatever it might be. And the, uh, the teeth of a five-dollar parking ticket just didn't seem to send a message to people who constantly want to abuse, I guess, you know, or block our streets because, uh, you know, whether it's for snow removal or just when our officers are going down at night and patrolling our streets, you know, they check those neighborhoods and see if that car belongs to, you know, that area and things like that. But anyways, administration decided to increase the overnight parking fee to twenty-five dollars, but the ordinance also does cover, you know, uh, how to, if a resident has, wants to disagree with the, or challenge the, the citation, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but it is up to the shift supervisor to evaluate that situation and, 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 you know, uh, either approve it or, 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 uh, what's the word?
Set aside.
Set aside.
Set aside, thank you.
So if someone is there, you have guests visiting for a week, or it's during Hall of Fame week or something like that, you have more people in, they have to get a fifty-dollar permit for a week?
No.
No.
No, so they just need to...
It's a good question, though.
They just need to, you know, reach out to the police department on this and explain the temporary need.
Okay.
You know, Hall of Fame.
Well, that's, okay, that's good.
Easter, whatever it is, it's bringing people in for a few days a week. And then, you know, we'll know that, that that plate, that make and model would be with the police department. All the shifts will know.
Okay.
That one's okay. It's okay to park on the street between two A M. and six A M.
Perfect.
If it was going to turn out to be longer, and I think Mr. Matheny or somebody gave you an example of, like, during COVID, when, uh, the schools were closed, uh, kids came home from COVID, minded, and, um, that created additional situations where parking wasn't contemplated. So in this instance, if someone was going to be home for three months, and they needed to have a little bit more than a temporary parking solution, this now provides a mechanism where we can issue a ninety-day permit. There's a fifty-dollar fee for that. You'll be given a special pass which will display your windshield or on your front dash, and then it's seen by officers. They'll know that that one's, that was okay.
With that being said, go ahead and make a motion that we move on with this. Can you do it in a second, Eddie?
Okay.
We'll go on, I, I, that will move.
Motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read, uh, the title of ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance establishing chapter thirteen thirteen of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, thereby creating regulations for the establishment and maintenance of grading and drainage on lots in the city of North Canton, Ohio.
John?
Yeah, um, Pat explained it real good, but it really opened my eyes, too. Residents are dumping a lot of dirt on their yard, changing the way the, the water is flowing. They could be going onto their neighbors or going where it shouldn't be going. So there are certain, uh, criteria that has to be met. The inspectors will come out and, you know, inspect it, but, um, also with the new buildings, uh, the new allotments and stuff of that nature, I, I don't think there'll be much of a problem with that. With the homes being built, I think it's going to be a lot more with, with homes that are already built, and they're throwing more dirt on there and changing the direction of the water and where it's flowing to, because you won't know until after a heavy rain. It might be a day or two days later, that water's sitting in the neighbor's yard or on their driveway or wherever. Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, that was a very good synopsis. John would add that, you know, just in driving around today, looking at other matters, uh, came across property that had ten dump truck loads of dirt drop on their property, in process of grading. And Marty, are you still in the line? Are you able to speak?
I'll need a couple of minutes.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Marty.
You recently had a, uh, a meeting with the, uh, the B I A. Is that correct?
I did, yep, last week. Joe Race hosted a meeting whereby I attended remotely, and I believe we had five or six of the home builders online there, and, um, I mean, a couple of things to note there, and I think first, um, the, the association was very much appreciative of, uh, us channeling out to them in sending this ordinance out for their review. And I believe Joe Race, uh, mentioned he is planning on attending the third reading to express his support and, again, his appreciation for that. But the main outcome for the meeting was there were three main changes, um, that we discussed. The first one is in that first paragraph, and effectively that, that's just really clarification, just telling us what, um, you know, what we already know. We can't conflict with the Ohio Building Code or the Residential Code of Ohio. But that was a good clarification to have that in the front and center. Uh, we have that right in the beginning of ordinance, so there is no confusion that, uh, this, this ordinance does not conflict with, uh, buildings under construction, particularly new homes, um, or new commercial buildings, as those codes have very specific requirements for the drainage, particularly, um, those, and the sec...
Marty, before you do the second one, uh, these, uh, these recommendations, have you forwarded them to the, uh, to Mr. Young's office?
Yes, those are incorporated into the agenda packet.
Excellent. Please continue.
Yep, yep, that is being considered.
Wanted to make that clear for our TV viewing audience that's tuning in from home tonight.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for pointing that out. So the second clarification was in regards to the work around the driveway approaches. Effectively, that gives the option of doing either sod or seeded, you know, for the grasses. You know, what the home builders had identified is typically they'll, they prefer the seeded approach, you know, with the hydro seeded particularly is, it is a much better approach than the sod. But this, this will give, you know, both as an option there. And the third, probably the most concerning portion of the discussion here was the survey part. So we did put some, that is a change, actually, that makes it specific that this does not apply to residential construction, single-family particularly. The reason is, this is a lot of information that is required. It does add additional costs whereby the projects that we have identified here, where it does apply, the non-residential project, the multifamily building or subdivision, this information is typically incorporated into those projects already. So that was some clarification there. And with the, with those three main revisions there, the home builders, again, as I mentioned, was, was in support of the old ordinance and did not object to it. And again, appreciated. How many?
Just for the record, what you heard was Mr. Martin Van Gundy, he's our chief building official. So I just wanted to make that, for the audience to know, that's the voice that you just heard. Thank you.
So do we have to make a motion for the amendments or the amendments are already in our package?
Yes.
Can you have to speak up, please?
Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, can we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 37-2023 to include the amendments drafted based on the feedback from the BIA as shown in the redlined version in council packets?
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance 37-2023 as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to department reports. Patrick, Director of Administration.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that, continuing to drive around the city, myself, the code enforcement coordinator who's here tonight, if you raise your hand, Rick Hand, that's Tom Bazozzi, and longtime resident of the city. And so we, we go around and, you know, everything that Tom looks at, I look at before it gets turned into safe bill. And so one of the things that's come up now, even before this, we were after individuals who were not taking care of their trees, the dead trees on their property, hazard trees, extensive piles of brush stored on their property, creating, depending on their point of view, unwanted habitats for animals that are affecting the neighborhoods, getting complaints on. But now with the storms, I guess that's where I'm going, with the storms that we've had, the contractors are just overwhelmed with work, and it's just, it's just taking longer. It's taking longer for them to even return phone calls, it's taking them longer to do the job, people are just overworked. So we're gonna, we're giving some additional time and latitude before we, you know, before we start to get back to that regular routine. So I just wanted you to know that, it's not something that we've forgotten about, but given Mother Nature's wrath, we decided to just take a little time out on that. And, you know, this, this next one, just, it's really for council benefit, just to understand, you know, at some point when I'm not here as the administrator, whenever that time might be, about how you really need to understand what happens when you don't have sufficient workforce and think that you can get away with it. And so there was a period of time after Hoover Company closed its doors that we cut the body count here, cut payroll. I know, I was on council, I led the effort. But as revenues grew in the years ensuing, we never added people back in. And so we went for a decade with trying to run the city with, you know, the labor force that was, you know, well below 100. And there was just so much left on the side. So today I spent some time in Whitmore Park, over there in John's Ford. And I was very disheartened to see what has developed over the last 15 years there. That property that's ours, that's on the west side of the park, behind the basketball court, behind the tennis court, and then what would be on the north side in front of the tennis court, all the way out to Harmon Street. That used to be about 30 to 40 feet wider than it is. 15 to 20 years ago, we were cutting all the grass, all the way up to the property line of the adjoining property, which made that parcel 30, 40 feet wider in different parts. But as time went on and people weren't around to maintain it, the leaves fell, the pine needles fell, it weren't cleaned up, killed the grass. It wasn't a sense of moment then. Then trees fall over, there must be 20, 30 trees that are down, and another, you know, 15, 20 ready to go. Briars have now invaded the space and it's, you know, three feet, four feet tall, full of briars all along there. That's unacceptable, and it should be. But, you know, that's where you all getting out, doing what John does, doing what Jamie does, Christine does, you all get, Dave, all of you get out. You're all walking around talking to people. I know, you called me, Stephanie and I talk all the time with issues. So that's what we need, that's what you need. But you also need to get that feedback that these issues are being taken care of, and if they're not, fine. So as a result, we've scheduled a cleanup day, that we're going to go in and we're going to brush hog that area, we're going to take down those hazard trees, remove all the stuff, and yours truly here is going to volunteer to be a worker bee that day and work under the direction of the superintendent and operations man, just to help. It's quite, it's a task to do. And we're appreciative of city council over the last few years adding additional people into department. You know, when I started here, we had two. Isn't going to get it done. So, you know, we were up to about, I think, six now, and we're starting to see, you know, efforts. And that when we ask for some of this stuff to be done, you know, it can't get done. It's a bit, you know, you know, like at one of those meetings where you have to confess your problems, well, that, I just did for all to see, but we're honest about it and we're doing things about it. So that's really what you want from your government. That was my report.
Well, thank you for putting the new dirt onto the baseball field over there. That really makes a big difference. And you're absolutely right about that property, because I coached flag football, and that's where we practiced at. And it was a lot wider back there in the day.
Well, since you brought that up to that end, I have been in contact with the school concerning the use of our property for football practices. So we're, first, that the seven-man sled that occupies part of Whitmore Park, that has to be removed.
Yeah, that's the school's.
Yeah, so they're working on getting that done. They thought that they had had it done, I called and reminded them that it wasn't, and it's grass mowing time. And to move that seven-man sled, having, where's my buddy here? He and I moved seven-man sled back in the day, right?
Back in the day.
Yeah, we used to do that. But do you go out and move it now, just being the layperson? We have to hook, we have to get a pickup truck, hook chains around that and pull it out of the way to mow the grass up there. That is just a complete inefficient operation there, so we're going to fix that part. And then as far as the practice games and whatnot, this goes directly to John's comment about the soft, about the infield there. So typically, when games are played there or practices or whatever it is that would cause them to want to line the field, in the past, they were lining that field and it went through the infield. That is no longer can be the case. You know, I don't know, was it five, seven years ago, whenever, about seven years ago, when the superintendent of parks was no longer with the city, went to fix, to try to fix that drainage issue on that ball field, spent, you know, $80,000 and ended up making it worse, didn't have a well-thought-out plan. So we've gone in and we fixed it, we thank council for the monies to do that, it's about $30,000 to remedy it, but it drains, it looks nice. But what we don't want is, you know, a herd of cleats running through it and digging up that investment again and having to fix it. And then, you know, interestingly, I didn't know this, but when the cleats dig it all up, that underneath that area, it's very clay-like soil, about 12 inches down, and if you paw at, if you're bambi and you paw at that sand, because there's cleats that have dug it out, starts to form, water starts to bubble up from down below. So the deer have learned to dig the infield, to make a bigger hole so that the water comes up and they get fresh drinking water. So you see how it just all snowballs? So we're, we've addressed that with the school. We also have some entities that are looking to rent more of the field, so we're getting more into our rec program now. This is, you know, our, probably our first foray back into it since we used to manage the pool. So we're going to rent fields, we have an online capacity for people to go in and make those reservations for us to get involved in some of the recreational programming. I know it really went on a long time, I'm sorry.
Sounds good.
It looks great. It looks great.
Mayor?
Well, thank you very much, President Stroya. I hope I don't go as long as Mr. Diorio, but it was in-depth and needed to be said, so thank you. I just want to cover a few things here. You know, in regards to the weather that has occurred here over the last week, few weekends, from the wind and storms, I just wanted to share, go on record, that we are thankful for, that no reported injuries or deaths occurred during, in our city, during those storms over the last two to three weeks. And I want to thank, again, AEP Ohio Service crews for responding to restore the power to our residents and businesses in a timely manner. They were very much overwhelmed, but you know what? They took care of North Canton, and I appreciate that. And your street department and crews, and our fire and EMS and police department personnel, they responded to calls for service one right after another, and it all started about 4:00 on a Saturday morning, a weekend this or ago. And it was all hands on deck for our, our team of people to combat the wrath of the weather, with trees falling and uprooted, and our phone lines down, and power lines down, and cable lines down, and internet lines down. So thank you very much to them. And also, I noticed when I was driving around over the last few weeks, really, I want to thank our community, neighbors, neighbors helping neighbors in cleaning up the debris in their yards and sidewalks and gutters and streets, I did see that happening. And, and I can't thank our street department enough, as they opened up our main streets very quickly, when there was, like on East Hill and Markport, when the trees came down and blocked those intersections and streets. I really want to recognize, too, some unsung heroes, I think, or heroine, heroines, dispatchers Randy Frias and dispatcher Stacy Petrie were on duty during the last onslaught of the weather. And I want to thank them for their outstanding performance in responding to continuous and exhausting bombardment of 911 calls for service. Chief was in there with me, along with the fire chief, and we were watching them, and about 60 calls in less than an hour, 911 calls coming in, and they're taking this information, dispatching our people to where their need is. But, you know, our city is a, our communication center is a public safety answering point. And believe it or not, we were getting calls from Pike Township, Plain Township, Jackson Township, Navarre, Alliance, Canton, New Philadelphia, Maslin, and even calls calling from Northern 911. If you research that, that's Canada. And what happens was the 911 lines were so overwhelmed in other communities, they were rolling over into our people, and our personnel were taking those calls. And so, once again, our first responders did a great job. We had a very good incident command system set up, again, with Chief Kemp and Chief Bacon. And so I just wanted to recognize that. I know it's a little late, and hopefully this will be a good, good week of weather, but, you know, that takes a lot of time and that's a lot of patience and it really plays on your nerves. I also want to say again, Dan Sutter, thank you for coming and presenting on the Stark MRDD issue 21. I, as Mayor Steve Wouter, along with other mayors throughout Stark County, have gone on record to endorse the support of the passing of issue 21. If you go to their website, you will see all the companies, organizations, and villages and township government, city government, that are supporting this vital levy for us. So thank you very much. I too, I'd like to share with the, our audience and, and council, I have two resolutions to present for the record. And this first one is to recognize, is a resolution to recognize Autism Awareness Month. And I'll just read the first few sentences here. Whereas the City of North Canton joins our nation and the United Nations General Assembly, who adopted Resolution 62/132 on December the 18th, 2007, to designate April the 2nd as World Autism Awareness Day, to be observed every year. And whereas autism is a complex development disability and promotes acceptance, excuse me, that affects how a person communicates with and relates to other people, it can affect how they make sense of the world around them. Again, that day was actually the 2nd, but the whole week is, we're recognizing it as Autism Awareness Month. And I'm encouraging all citizens to participate and learn more about autism and the lived experience of those with autism and autism spectrum disorder, from people with autism and work to build a more welcoming and inclusive community for the people with autism, given under my hand with the seal of North Canton, here on the 10th day of April, 2023. The second resolution I'd like to present to council and our audience was also a day that was in the past, but it's also another recognition for the month. And that is Stark County declares April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas the City of North Canton joins Stark County Commissioners Richard Regula, Bill Smith, and Janet Ware Creighton, having declared April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the commissioners presented a proclamation on Wednesday, April the 5th, 2023, to the Stark County Job and Family Services Executive Director Jerry Coleman and Interim Director of Children's Services Tricia Mailey. And, but we are also joining that cause and bringing that to attention of our community. And whereas the Stark County Job and Family Services has partnered with Project CARE, that's K-A-R-E, to promote Wear Blue Day. On Wednesday, April the 12th, 2023, Wear Blue Day encourages residents to wear blue to work, school, and a community event for child abuse prevention. And those who wear blue are invited to share their photos with Job and Family Services by emailing them. If you go to their website, you'll be able to find out what that, what that is, but it is actually rachel.koller, K-O-L-L-E-R, at ifs.ohio.gov. And you can post those things on the social media, or just do hashtag StarkWearBlue, wears blue. But I'll be wearing blue on the 12th, not only in recognition of the Autism Awareness Month, they've selected also the 12th to wear blue, and, and our city, wearing blue. And if you really want to go to the website, you can see right here. And if you really wanna go to the website, you can see right here, there's a nice thing that you can wear, so for those in the audience, April the twelfth, Wednesday's gonna be a special day. And I also want to say, over this last weekend, up at the, the athletic fields across from Dogwood Park, if you're out that way on Saturday, there was a lot of activity going on. And by nine-thirty in the morning, there is no place to park. You actually had to park way over, over by the high school. Well, I wanna congratulate the North Canton JCs for an exceptional Easter egg hunt. They, we estimated over a thousand participants, families participating in two waves. And softball was going on, a multi-school track event, lacrosse and baseball was going on. And so it was quite an activity day there on Saturday. But again, to have about a thousand people plus for our Easter Day event planned by the North Canton JCs, they did an outstanding job and I congratulate them on that. And in closing, I wanna thank the Boy Scouts for being here. I imagine you're here for citizenship in the community. So I wanna thank you and I wanna thank the rest of the people, you know, in our audience for sitting in on our two meetings tonight, our public hearing and then city council. So as a Boy Scout myself and as an Eagle Scout, it's nice to see you all here being a part of our program and I hope that you find it beneficial. And I wish you the best in, as you go on in your scouting career and, and I hope you get the merit badge after this one. So thank you, President Sroya.
Absolutely. Thank you.
He was longer.
Was he longer? He timed me.
Seven minutes.
Finance, Gina, Jim.
Not competing, but I'm gonna give you some information. It is the quarterly finance report. So you'll see attached to the report, besides the regular monthly five pages, we've added the statement of cash. It shows each fund, which you also have every month. But then along with that, the revenue report, so it'll show you where we are, every line item of revenue. The expense report as well was also in the packet. And then the last, quite a few pages, is the quarterly check report. So you'll have a list of all the checks as well. So I just wanna give you a little bit of an idea of the stats of where we are on the first quarter. Our income tax, we are collected at about twenty-five percent of our budget, which just tells us our budget's on target at this point. We're seeing a little bit, a few different things. Our withholding average usually is around sixty-five percent of our tax income, but our income tax this year is around seventy-three percent. So that may just have something to do with the number of people, individuals that are filing. So we'll kind of keep our eye on that and if we need to make those adjustments through the year, we will. I'll just do my plug right away for Rita. Whether or not you owe, please file your taxes by next Tuesday. They had some interesting statistics. This was the first year they really encouraged the e-file for individuals. So I don't know if you've been online and, and use the, is it my Rita page? They've had two hundred ninety-two thousand individual returns filed already. And filing doesn't always mean they process those, but because they've had so many efficiencies in their processing, they're actually, their call center is down twelve percent for calls, which is still twenty thousand two hundred, not just North Canton, clearly Rita is the income tax agency for quite a few municipalities. But they have processed over seventy-five percent of refunds already and so that's just outstanding when we haven't even hit the filing deadline. Whether or not you owe, just please remember to still file. As a resident, you still have to file, so. That, we're following the due date of April eighteenth, same as the IRS, so that's next Tuesday. Then back on to our revenues year-to-date current, all revenues, not just income tax, we're at seventeen percent. And expense also at seventeen percent. So again, with the budget true-up appropriations that we did tonight, those are actually gonna be in effect in April, so this is just taking you through the end of March as far as those statistics. Our bank reconciliation, our portfolio, our investment portfolio, we do have eighty-five percent of our money's invested. The date range, I think our portfolio duration right now, which we can, governments are allowed to be invested up to five years. For the most part, their CDs, one year, two years. We really try to keep the duration less than five, but we have, we do match them up again as well. We have debt payments, we know when they're due twice a year. We have, like this March, this, this past month was a three-pay month. We have two of those every year. So we try to invest our money to mature at the times when we know we need cash flow. So our duration is one point four or five years and it's because interest rates have been so, minus the term crappy, but they are starting to improve. And our CDs, right now, we have some that the best we could get was a point two percent and now recently we've just invested at three point two five and no whopping. And our federal securities, which are the most stable that we can invest in, was at point seventeen. That's our lowest one, but it was the best we could get at one time. Recently, we've been investing at five point two-six percent. So we do have a wide range. Our portfolio is, is as diverse as it can be. The average current yield is one point six-nine percent. So as those things start to mature, we'll invest in longer term if the rates say that that's probably the best thing we can do. And then I wanted to give you some payroll and account payable statistics, just quickly. Our employees, I know our director of administration talked about this, our employees are up nine percent over this time last year. So this is just looking at first quarter this year versus first quarter last year. We have a hundred and thirty-six employees on the payroll roster. Last year at this time is a hundred and twenty-five. And that includes some part-time people in and out. Remember, we have quite a few departments with part-time, such as fire, EMS, parks, so. Our first quarter payroll, we did have, I mentioned seven payrolls, where this time through last year, we only had six. So you'll see some cash flow difference on that as well. It's around three ninety, three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars difference due to the payroll. Our overtime right now is also up twenty-three percent, but it's a small number, so twenty-three percent of a small number is not a lot. Nothing to cause concern at this point. And our accounts payable checks. For the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, we've written three hundred and fifteen transactions. They're not all checks because we do quite a bit now with electronic payments. But three hundred and fifteen transactions for a total of four point six-five million. In the first quarter last year, we had three hundred and thirty-one checks, so more checks, but less money, two point one-three million. And the difference of two and a half million is really our economic development projects that we are slowly wrapping up and starting to come to a close on over the next couple of weeks. Did you have any questions on the finance report?
That's great.
Was that longer or shorter? Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, at this point, I do not.
Thank you. Council clerk, Ben.
I have two things. First, I just wanted to thank council for approving the survey and it's a great program. We've had it going for more than a decade and a half now. And I just wanted to remind you all that it's one survey per adult, not one survey per household. As you're doing your walkarounds of neighborhood, as Patrick talked about, every person you talk to, remind them to go take the survey. And then to piggyback off of what Patrick was talking about, of having the right people in the right places, part of the appropriations you all acted on tonight includes improved software for permitting and licensing, which was part of our master plan. Patrick's very excited about this. Fortunately, before Safebuilt, we had a different software vendor. And after we brought on Safebuilt, that software vendor did not want to give us our permitting data from historically. We have been fortunate to recover that permitting data. And I have now the wonderful task of going through it and cleaning it and making it accurate. But once that's all in place, we will have the city's pretty much entire issue of permitting going back to the nineteen seventies all in one place.
That's great.
And it will all be, and applying for new permits will be possible online, whereas right now you have to come into the permit system.
Thank you. Our council reports, Jamie, board one.
All right, yeah. Kind of wanna echo what the mayor was saying about over there on Seventh Street on Saturday. So first, I was there split between two events. My daughter plays softball for the North Canton Fast Pitch Association. They're doing a field cleanup, so it was neat to be a part of that. And I think seeing so many people there for the Easter egg hunt, because I can remember, I'm a H dot J C, a life member and seeing that many people, I was just absolutely blown away, but, but it was kind of fun as I'm shoveling sand and I think it was my wife said, hey, the mayor's here to talk to you. I'm like, oh, okay. So it was nice being able to run into Mayor Wilder and both being excited about what was happening over there that day. So the other thing, Mr. Sutter, I wanna thank you for coming in this evening and thank you for sharing what Stark DD does. Thank you for the work that you do with them and I wish you much success on May second. Mentioned on my H dot J C and one of the fondest memories I have is being a part of the, the Special Olympics Track Media Invitational that we had. I understand it's not gonna happen this year, but hopefully it comes back and I tell you what, you guys all should volunteer for that, because that is one special event, so. So just thank you for the work that you do in the community, so. Thank you for making, giving me a couple corrections as my, for my Roberts Rules of Order mishaps this evening, so. Oh, I'm sorry. I was thanking Ben for correcting me with my Roberts Rules of Order mishaps this evening, so I appreciate the impromptu lesson, so.
That's what I'm.
All right, perfect. And I, I think that's all I have to share this evening.
Excuse me, Jamie?
Yes.
You're not gonna share with the audience that I crossed you back when you were a child going to the Easter egg hunt when I was a police officer?
Well, so I, I don't remember that far back, but what I will tell you, what, so first off, Officer Wilder was my dare officer, excuse me, I keep calling him Officer Wilder. It's ingrained in my memory. He was my dare officer in sixth grade, but a really fond memory I have of him was when I was in the JCs and we were, we used to have the Easter egg hunt over at Dogwood Park. And I can remember, you were just, I, I think it was my first event or first Easter egg hunt and it just seemed like there was, there was a sea of people. And it's like, oh my gosh, where are they all coming from? But then I can remember looking over and seeing the chief of police himself directing traffic on Seventh Street. But yeah, that was, we reminisced about that on Saturday, so.
David, board two.
As chairperson of Personnel and Safety, I think there's been several updates with Personnel. I don't have anything to add to that. On the safety side, as Mayor Wilder had mentioned with all the trees down, it's created a lot of challenges for the community, but it's been great seeing neighbors, helping neighbors and being part of this community. I also think about the warm weather that's coming about and the number of people that are out, the joggers and the walkers, and I've mentioned this before. It's time to be alert. It's time to be safe. It's time to watch those flashing lights in the crosswalks. It's time to make sure and hit the buttons before hitting the crosswalks. But at the same time, it's a community and we all need to be looking out for each other and I've seen that in the past weeks. And I just wanna remind people to be safe going forward. To the gentlemen here, our scouts, I'm challenging you. I want you to ask questions. I want you to be part of your community. I want you to be part of your neighborhood. You can make an impact. So they say there's so much going on in the world right now that you should think globally, but act locally. And you have that direct control and you can be involved in your community and you can make this a better place for all of us. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. David. Stephanie, board three.
Okay, David, that was said very well and nice. I echo that to the Boy Scouts as well. It's really exciting to see what's going on up at Old Kmart. Oh my gosh, wow, huge economic development. Boy Scouts, when you think locally, you just go straight up North Main and you're gonna see a lot that's gonna be going on. So that's a great spot. And thank you to you coming and visiting, working proponents of it with Leadership Stark County and the Canton Regional Chamber of Commerce and have, have echoed all that you said, so thank you for coming.
All right. John, board four.
Not too much tonight. Again, I've been seeing a lot of people helping others out there. There was a huge tree down on Cordelia in Woodland and it was, oh, and I think there was another one on Rose Lane. But people out there helping people. Christina, Patrick and all those who were involved, I think the dog's working across the street. I was walking on the walking track and I go, something's missing. And my wife, you know what's missing? And I said, you know, the geese and the duck and whatever they leave behind, but they're, it looks great. I call that the second crown jewel of my ward. And that park is so fabulous over there. We're very, very fortunate to have that. I gave Patrick a couple streets to look at. And I think we can get those done and as I'm taking notes, I'm ranking them and those were like the two worst, Patrick, that I gave you, so. Get out there in your ward, talk to the people, because they really, we're a good council. We, we don't have the, the fighting or the, all of that. It's gone in the past. I think we're a good council. We follow up with what, it's not what we want, it's what our voters want. If we remember that all the time, we'll continue to be great. The Boy Scouts, thank you. If I had to do it all over again, I would wanna be a Boy Scout. I never, I never was active in the Boy Scouts. I have a, I have a cousin who's becoming an Eagle Scout this year. And the work that goes through that and stuff, so you got a lot, a lot of things to go ahead with, but that's a great group to stay with. Thank you, Mr. Sutter, for showing up. For all of that and all the other guests that came tonight, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. Christina.
Okay, well, the mayor passed part of his report on me. Same time, you would've been longer. So I was planning to mention anyway, though, the Library's Earth Day Recycle Fair is Saturday, April twenty-second, eleven to two. There's Goodwill, we'll have a truck there accepting, really, Goodwill accepts, which is almost everything. There will be an e-cycle truck there, accepting electronics for recycling and then we'll have paper shredding at City Hall in the parking lot there. That is funded by the North Canton Police Department. Thank you for that. So you can bring up to three boxes of paper to be shredded and no one says how large the boxes are. So bring, bring the boxes. And there's also, will be a plant sale. Know Your Roots, who runs our farmer's market here, always kicks off their selling season at the Earth Day event, so they'll be there as well. So that is Saturday, April twenty-second. We put up signs all over the city today, so you will see those as you go around. What else? Catherine and I are going to start touring parks. I think I mentioned this before, but that's starting this week. We're gonna go and tour and look around and just sort of drill down on some of these projects. Patrick, thank you for getting that big football thing out of Whitworth Park. I can tell you, as like the person who plans the movie nights, this is hilarious and sad, in the park for the library, multiple times, I would have to go to the police department and say, this thing is where everyone's coming to sit and we can't, you know, if we were like us, we couldn't move it. And the police would come out. I feel really bad for that, but that should not be their job, so. So I'm glad to see that, yeah, so I'm glad that that's being taken care of. We eventually learned and would go during the day and would call the schools, but the first few times, it always surprised us. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, moving on, on April twenty-ninth, just another reminder, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth at Arrowhead, there will be an open house from twelve to two. So everyone is welcome. There'll be free appetizers, drink specials, you can get a discount on pool memberships for new members. And you can tour and see all of the new things that are happening there, which is really exciting, lots of improvements. So if you haven't taken a pickleball yet, so check it out and you can do that. Thank you, Mr. Sutter. Thank you for honestly just serving. We all know, we don't all know, but a lot of us know what those board rules are like and it's gratifying, but boys have a lot of work, especially when you're running levy campaigns, so. I hope all goes well. We definitely support that. I think that is, oh, I will not be here. I, I will tell you this now, I will not be here next Monday for the next committee. I have surgery that day, so.
Talk about that.
Yeah, but other than that, that's all.
All right, my turn. You guys stole all the events from me. The only thing I can think of is Dogwood passes started going on sale on Monday, so those are available. Dan Sutter, Sutter Suter?
Sutter.
Sutter, okay. Thank you for making your presentation and I support Stark DD and I think everybody else. Thank you for making your presentation, and I support Stark DD and I think everybody else. Thank you all for coming. Cub Scout, or Boy Scouts, right? Okay, nice. So I have about a 20-minute presentation planned. I'm just kidding. I'll just say buy and support local instead of that.
That's good.
Moving on, final call for new business?
Darryl did email me his notes.
Oh.
Stop it. No, 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 that's the person.
That's good. That could sometimes take 20 minutes. Final call for new business? Season nine, let's discuss the meeting's calendar. So we do have April 17th Committee of the Whole, but then we're also going to do a meeting on the 19th?
Yeah, it's on the screen. Chairman of Vote called it after I published the agenda, so it didn't make the agenda.
So is there, let's maybe talk about combining those two? It's kind of silly to have two. Would you guys be okay moving?
Patrick, didn't you and I talk about that?
I have to have the one on the 19th.
Yeah. But remember when we talked, we said, why don't we just have it? Yeah, sorry.
And I think I shared, I can't make the 19th, my daughter has surgery that day.
Gotcha, okay. So we've got two on the 19th?
I mean, there's a chance I might make it.
You can't tell.
I don't know yet.
It depends.
I hope so, I really want to be there.
Right.
Does the council clerk know what will be on the agenda? There's nothing requiring an emergency meeting here.
There's, the only potential emergency item is, I believe Gina submitted another appropriation memo.
Yes, indeed. We can do it on the 19th, if it's fine.
We can do it on the 19th?
There's going to be six people here to do it.
Appropriations are not by emergency, this is for the new bonds, we'll have that as well.
Problem solved, just need a majority, so.
The new bonds will maybe be done.
Oh.
Well, but they don't need, they don't need six votes in committee, they only need, they need six votes.
It's just a committee, it's just a committee.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Let's, I mean, do we want to combine that and have it all on the 19th? It's kind of silly to meet twice and have the money to do that twice. Can we do 5:30?
I have an event that night. It's the Conquest.
That's two of us, 6 o'clock, yeah.
You're what?
Conquest, that's at 6 for you and me.
It's 5.
5?
5 to 7.
Okay.
So, because I don't think it'll take probably half an hour?
Well, I think if we, if we do, the, if, remember we're all does his committee first, then that would allow people at 5:30 to come, or then the committee of the whole.
What about this? Our meetings are normally at 7 o'clock. What if we pushed it back to 7 o'clock and it'd be after your event? The likelihood of, I can't guarantee that I'm going to be there, depends on when we get released from the hospital, but.
You're confusing this.
We can do it at your hospital room.
Why do we do that, so, okay.
Mayor, did you look at it?
I had. We have council on the whole scheduled for the 17th, right?
Yeah, we're not.
And we were scheduling a 5 o'clock meeting on the 19th. I had Conquest starting at 6.
Oh. Well, if it starts at 6, then the 5:30 works.
So we're not going to have two meetings on the 17th? We would just have our regular council of the whole on the 17th and then?
No, on the 19th.
Yeah, we're talking about combining.
Excuse me, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that point. So no meeting on the 17th and move it to the 19th is what you're considering?
Yes. David, could you make 7 on the 19th?
Anytime after 5:30.
Okay. So I mean, does it make more sense to move it later?
Wait, let me, I just need to find it. Taste of hope.
Can you do 7? Yeah, I can do whatever.
Well, it does say 6. It does say 6. Mayor, you a VIP guest? I'm not.
No, I'm not a VIP guest.
Then it does say 6.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we did, can you, David, can you do 5:15?
I have.
Can we start it?
We have a whole managers, all departments, all sites, everybody that's served. Getting down by 5 is going to be my challenge.
David, it just say as is, I don't know.
Do we have enough without David?
Well, I think that on the 19th, if the first meeting is the Economic Development Committee meeting, which is generally, it's going to be a discussion, but not an action item, that would allow you then to come for the.
For the committee meeting?
For the committee meeting, where you're going to actually have action items at 5:30.
Is that okay, David?
No, I'm saying we start at 5 and let Dave join the progress to the.
And then if I have to leave?
And then if you have to leave, you have to leave.
Okay.
Okay. It's kind of one of those like timely auctions or timely events.
19th is cast in stone? The 19th is cast in stone?
Yeah.
Could the 20th be done?
What, Jamie?
Could the 20th be done?
The, yeah, the 19th, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, that's pretty set us down.
Don't we have enough people?
Yeah, again, there's not an action item, there's no voting out of committee or anything like that. You just need four to conduct a meeting.
Yeah.
Chairman of the committee called it, so it's not like all seven of you have to be here for a committee meeting or that subcommittee.
All right, so let's, let's do the 19th start at 5. We'll combine both meetings at 5. The first one will be the committee, the special meeting, the committee meeting, and then the committee of the whole will be following that.
The following night?
Following as soon as that meeting would adjourn.
Well, I think, I'll work with you and Chairman of Vote to just have a committee of the whole at 5:00.
Okay.
We don't need to do a double.
Well, yeah, that makes sense. It would be, okay, yeah, it would just be part of that. Okay, so one meeting.
There you go.
Okay, all right.
Just that would be the first part.
All right, and any voting we'll do at the end to give more opportunity for everybody to do it. So no Monday, no Monday meeting. It would be Wednesday, the 19th, Committee of the Whole, we'll just call it. And then a regular city council meeting on April 24th. Okay, so make that work. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It's not usually like that.
We do?
How you doing?
If you have a chance.
Got it.
I'll let the government.
Hey, you're saying, you're not asking, so how can you do this? Do you guys, you guys want to go with this? Here's your pen, then.